Welcome to Murfreesboro City Council Meeting, August 25th, 2016. Councilmember Rick LaLance has our prayer.
You'll bow with me.
Lord, thank you for all the blessings in our lives. Thank you so much for all the blessings that we take for granted. Thank you for our opportunity to serve. I want to pray a special blessing tonight for Ron Washington. And just thank you for his service that he's given to this community and this state on all the ripple effects that go across to all the things that he's touched in his service of many, many years. Lord, a special blessing also to all the employees of the city. And we hope that you'll be with them this week and this coming week. And the police and firefighters, keep them safe. Amen.
I also want to introduce to you, who's going to lead our pledge tonight, Ella Riley. If you'll come up to the podium.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmembers, we have a couple of very special ceremonial items tonight. I want to start out by introducing a group of young ladies who had a very big accomplishment this past summer. So I want to introduce the Lady Storm along with their coach, Billy Lewis. If you guys wouldn't mind, ladies, come up behind me, please. Councilmembers, this lady soccer team had a historic summer. They were, to our knowledge, the first team in the history of Murfreesboro to actually bring home a Division One state championship. So ladies, I have a proclamation. Want to have a proclamation that I want to read to you tonight. Whereas through the discipline, dedication, and hard work, the Murfreesboro FC Youth '03 Lady Storm has experienced a spectacular season on the journey to the T double S A Division One State Championship Tournament. And whereas the Lady Storm, along with Coach Billy Lewis, with a record of 35, 4, and 4, won the T double S double A Division One State Championship with their athleticism, grit, and determination. And whereas the Murfreesboro FC Youth '03 Lady Storm, along with Coach Billy Lewis, proudly represented Murfreesboro and Rutherford County, also winning the Cincinnati United Cup, the Clarksville Invitational, and the Tennessee Cup. And whereas were finalists in the Tennessee Invitational and Music City Invitational. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim August 25th, 2016, as a day to recognize the Murfreesboro FC Youth '03 Lady Storm, and encourage all citizens to join me in this recognition and honoring this significant contributions, visibility, and notoriety the team and its coach has brought to our city. Coach Lewis? Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Well, you want to introduce your team?
Yes. First, Shannon's been our captain for two to three years. And we, as a group in Murfreesboro FC, would like to especially thank the city and the Parks and Rec Department for, one, recognizing that we can keep our talented young ladies and men here instead of going to other cities and bringing home a D1 state championship. And also giving us the field space and all the things that we need to do this. Without you as a group, that wouldn't have happened. I mean, instead of playing in the backyard with rough holes, we got great fields. I mean, and it's a part of the city, and we're a part of the city, and we thank you. So we got this for the Parks and Rec Department. It's a plaque for thanking y'all for doing that. Shake his hands, ready?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Shannon. Shannon O'Brien. Olivia Marlowe. Lexie Berry. Dakota Mitchell. Lindsay, I won't say your last name. Morgan. So can y'all go in the back, please? Morgan Simmons. Delaney Mitchell. Carla Hawkins. Allison LaLance. Ella Riley. Ashley Clark. Anna Bobo. And we had two that could not make it tonight, Sloan Ledford and Madeline Myers, that were also on the team that were actually had prior commits that could not come back.
Thank you for making Murfreesboro proud. We greatly appreciate you, young ladies, and hopefully look forward to another championship this year. Sound good? All right. We'll see you this time next year, okay? All right. Thank y'all. And also want to recognize, you know, having kids, and I know Rick will say this as well, we spend a lot of time on ball fields and soccer fields and want to thank, I don't think any of these young ladies are old enough to drive yet, so we want to thank all the parents for the time that you invest in your kids and helping Murfreesboro not only share the success of these young ladies, but you're grooming the future leaders of this community, and we greatly appreciate what you do. So thank y'all very much. Tonight is also another special time. We had a ceremony earlier, but tonight we are paying tribute to the many, many years of service that Councilmember Ron Washington has not only given to this City Council, but to the residents of Murfreesboro, to the citizens of Murfreesboro, and to the many communities of Murfreesboro. Ron has served on this council for 28 years? 18 years, I'm sorry, 18 years. But has served 20, almost 28 years throughout different capacities in this city. So I want to ask Ron to come up. We have a proclamation. I want to read some of it. We joked at the ceremony before this that you can tell how many accomplishments someone's had by how tiny the writing is on the proclamation. And Ron has served this city in just about every capacity on every board. He's represented this city nationally. He's represented this city in many state organizations. And want to just read, really, I want to read to you just a few snippets out of our proclamation for Ron. Ron Washington has served on the Murfreesboro City Council since 1998 and is a lifelong resident of Murfreesboro. His greatest accomplishment, I think he would tell you, is he's married to Dr. Phyllis Washington, and they have two children, Markeith and Carmel. Ron is a 1981 graduate of Middle Tennessee State University with a Bachelor of Science degree in Mass Communications. Ron was instrumental in the expansion of the Patterson Center as chairperson of the Patterson Park Study Committee, and was instrumental in the South Manny Avenue upgrade. Ron also was a leader in various economic growth opportunities during his tenure on the City Council, including the Gateway Project, the Medical Center Parkway, the Avenues, Embassy Suites, and the Conference Center. And I feel like I need to read this off, so I know our council members know this, but so the residents of Murfreesboro know. Ron served on the Murfreesboro Planning Commission from 1993 to 2002. He served on the Murfreesboro City School Board as a council liaison. He was vice mayor, member of the Pension Committee, the Golf Commission, the Limeball Library Board, the Urban Environmental Commission, the Water and Sewer Board, the Cable Commission, the Airport Commission, the City County Cultural Arts Committee, the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. He represented Murfreesboro with the National League of Cities on the Transportation Commission. He was a part of the Infrastructure and Services Committee from 1999 to 2004. He served on the Tennessee Municipal League Board, the Discovery Center Board, Leadership Rutherford Board, the Leadership Middle Tennessee Board, MTSU Foundation Board, the Blue Raider Athletic Association, the Murfreesboro Alumni Chapter of Calpa Afasai Fraternity Incorporated, the Noon Exchange Club, and he's been a trustee, or excuse me, a Noon Exchange Club member and trustee at the Murfreesboro Olive Branch Missionary Baptist Church. So with all those esteems and accolades, we recognize Council Ron Washington's notable and significant contributions to the City of Murfreesboro and the City Council. Ron has made a difference in our neighborhoods and our city and handled himself at all times with grace and class. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, and its citizens, do hereby proclaim August 25th, 2016, as a day to honor Ronald T. Washington, a remarkable man for his many contributions and devotions to the citizens of the city that will be felt for many, many generations to come. Ron, we want to present you with a proclamation and also present you with the key to the city.
Thank you. but just thank you. Thank you. Just keep up the good work. Build community trust. That's what I want all of you as councilmembers to do, is make sure the community can trust you and don't flip-flop, you know, just do, serve the best you can. And I'll be watching. And I'll be still doing some things with Rob and stuff behind the scenes and Melissa, you know, we gonna talk. But, you know, but it's time. Young new councilmember Kurt Wade, I was impressed Monday at the retreat. He's gonna be fantastic. So as long as you continue to have councilmembers that think about the total community, you'll be fine. Don't just get caught up in how you were raised or whatever background you have, because this community is about everybody. And I think I've tried to do that, is try to make sure that the folks that don't have a whole lot of voice, some of us can have that. Because, you know, be sensitive to people that don't have the blessings that we have had. And I've been blessed. I'm not gonna lie to you. Middle Tennessee Electric and working with the city has been a blessing to me. And anything I can do to help anybody that's just in my blood, I'm a public servant, but it's time to move on. And you all, y'all can have it, you know, y'all. And I thank the Lord, and I pray for you, you know, that you don't get selfish and get partisan and all that kind of good stuff that's going on in this country today. Don't do that, not on the local level. And so with that, I'm done. Have a good day.
Before we seriously, I don't have to stay for the entire meeting, but love to get a picture with all the team and Coach Lewis. I neglected to do that. So if you guys want to, ladies want to come up? Parents, y'all may want to take the picture. Let's stand. Let's stand right. Y'all want to, let's stand. Yeah, let's stand right here. Billy, you can get right there.
Mr. LaLance, go down with your daughter, please. Mayor.
It's all right. He needs to go down.
With his daughter, Rick. Rick needs to go down with his daughter. Rick, go down with, that's a moment. That's a Kodak moment for her. That's a Kodak moment for her.
That's a memory.
Yeah.
It's a memory.
You're making memories. You had a good day, didn't you?
Yeah, it's a memory.
My dad would be open. Well, you're just starting out.
One.
But you can control that.
Yeah.
There you go.
Which one? Hey? All right, you're a practiced athlete.
They're going to practice.
All right, thanks, councilmembers. We've got to recognize two champions tonight, right?
Good point, Mayor, good point.
Okay, you have the consent agenda in front of you. You have three items on your consent, excuse me, two items on your consent agenda.
Mayor, hearing no objections, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading, order 16033, to amend the conditions applicable to an area in the Plant Industrial Development, PID District Parkway Place, located along Joby Jackson Parkway, Joe Swanson Applicate 2016-422.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading, order 16035, to rezone an area located along North Rutherford Boulevard and Old Las Cassis Road, the Highway Commercial CH District, 2016-427.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading, order 16033, to amend the conditions applicable to an area in the Plant Industrial Development, PID District Parkway Place, located along Joby Jackson Parkway, Joe Swanson Applicate 2016-422.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading, order 16033, to amend the conditions applicable to an area in the Plant Industrial Development, PID District Parkway Place, located along Joby Jackson Parkway, Joe Swanson Applicate 2016-422.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item four has been withdrawn. Number five, consider for passage on second and final reading, order 16035, to rezone an area located along North Rutherford Boulevard and Old Las Cassis Road, the Highway Commercial CH District, 2016-427.
Motion. Make the motion. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Under new business, we will consider recommendations of Assistant City Attorney, proposed master license agreement regarding use of city right-of-way by the Zayo Group LLC.
Mayor, members of council, my honor to present this tonight. The Zayo Group has been working with us for some time on this project. Zayo is embarking on a very sizable project that will connect all of the Verizon cell phone towers in middle Tennessee area via fiber optic cable. The point of this is to increase both capacity and speed of wireless communications on the Verizon network. We're a small part of it, but yet it's a big project for us here in Murfreesboro. They will be running a number of connections to all of the Verizon towers here in Murfreesboro area. Most of their fiber optic will be installed as pole attachments on MED poles and some, of course, on middle Tennessee Electric poles. There will be areas where they will be either digging, tunneling, or ditching to put conduit underground in our right-of-way and laying the fiber optic cable in that conduit. For, they have already entered into the pole attachment agreement with MED. I believe they have one with middle Tennessee Electric, but that's up to middle Tennessee Electric. We have established a comparable agreement for them to place their facilities in our right-of-way underground. The master license agreement will then allow them to apply for specific licenses for specific locations. Those will be reviewed by combination of Planning Department, engineering primarily, and Street Department, Transportation. MED, of course, will also be involved in that, as well as Water and Sewer, to assure that we don't have problems with conflicts in the utilities. As we have more and more utility facilities underground, the conflicts are a problem. So everybody's going to be working carefully, and we have confidence that that will do it. We, Zayo also is going to be providing the city with two pair of fiber optic cables, four cables total for the city's use. They will put connection points on those cables. This is on the overhead cable as well as the underground cable, and we will put attachment points that will be determined as we go forward in the project. That'll be for the city's use, for its own use only. Of course, we can't resell that to someone else, but any city department will be able to use it. So we'd ask your approval of this master contract and authorizing the mayor to sign it. I do have a map. It's very unruly, so it's not real easy to hold up and show tonight, but if someone wants to see a map of their middle Tennessee project, I'd be happy to show it to them after the meeting. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We ask your approval and authorization for signature.
What is the term of this agreement?
This is, it's a 10-year agreement with a 10-year renewal.
And all you could get was two?
I'm sorry?
All you could get was two for the city? Did you say something about, I might have missed it, about designated lines for the city?
Yeah, two pair of fiber optic cables will be provided to the city. Out of a, I believe they're going to put in 144 pair cables, but most of this, some of it may be a little smaller, some may be larger, but they will dedicate two pair of cables, the fiber optic cables, to the city for city use.
Okay. Is that enough?
We believe it is. In talking with the IT Department and Transportation, they believe that the two pairs will be sufficient.
Knowing the growth that's going to happen in the next 10 years, you know, I'd ask them for two more.
I believe there's a representative here tonight.
That's my idiot.
I don't know if he'll have authority to make that commitment or not, but I would ask Mr. Terry Davis to come forward.
Mr. Davis, is that going to be enough for the city, a growing city, an expanding city?
That's typical. Even in a city the size of Nashville, we typically will give four pair, or two pair of fibers. Keep in mind that the technology is there today to put multiple data strings on one fiber, so you can put like up to seven data streams on one fiber, so that's effectively 28 data stream. So, and those are, yeah, no cost to the city, so.
So is it two pair that we're talking?
Well, that's, you know, that's most of the days we talk about pairs. It's four fibers. The fiber don't really come in pairs, but it's four fibers.
And how many fibers in each line that you, or you saw?
It's a beautiful one we're at on our backbone routes, like going down 96, it's probably 144 count. On laterals out to the cell sites, it's probably 48 count. And so we service, we're only, we don't service homes and things like that, so we're more of a, you know, provider to like AT&amp;T or Verizon Sprint. And we do do commercial accounts, so that, you know, that might be some opportunities in the future for commercial accounts as people come in.
Yeah, they're installing more capacity than they anticipate Verizon using, so they will be anticipating leasing or selling fibers to other customers, variety of other customers, be it telecom or internet providers, or simply a private business that wants to run some fiber optic from point A to point B. And if they have that available, they'll be certainly looking at leasing that. So they're installing substantial extra capacity for hopeful future business.
Keep in mind, you do have a 10-year renewal, so you can also relook at the fiber count at that time.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Mr. Ives, is there, looking at, when you look at your map, I know there's a city right-of-way that, you know, a lot of times people don't understand that it's right-of-way, you know, the sidewalks in my neighborhood, for instance, is there going to be a lot of, you know, where you're talking about digging trenches and stuff like that? Are we going to be going through a lot of people's yards to do this? Or are you talking about, I mean?
There won't be, I don't anticipate a large amount in yards, because I think they're going to be more or less on major thoroughfares, but they will be within the city right-of-way. And one of the points is that as a telecom provider, as a certified utility here in the state of Tennessee, they have the legal right to be in our right-of-way. Now, we have the right to regulate that, and we can put some reasonable restrictions on it, which we believe we are doing with this master agreement, but they have the right to be in our right-of-way if there's room for them.
Do they give notice to the areas where they're going to be, prior notice?
Their standard practice is yes. If they're going to be working in an area, they'll do door hangers for people and to let them know that that's coming. We've modeled this substantially on a contract that we did with a company called XO Communications. XO installed underground fiber from a point on Spring Street.
Right over here, wasn't it?
And College over to Highland and then up to the university's Bell Street building. All of that was underground. And so they were in the right-of-way, but still in the front yards of people all along College. And I'm not aware of any problems. I'm not aware of any water lines gotten hit, you know, and that's always a risk when you're doing underground. And it's provided for in here, that they will be responsible for anything like that that does happen. But I'm not aware of any problems to the XO project.
Is most of this cable, when it's installed, it's not ditch witch or anything like that? It's more of a boring, right? So?
It'll depend on where they are, I'm sure.
It's going to be almost all boring. And there's very, very little underground. It's more probably approaching 80 to 85 percent of the area.
So you're not talking about cutting drives and cutting roadways and stuff like that? Most of it's boring.
I don't know residential areas where everything is down 96. We're actually redesigning our medical center parkway to get off of those medical center parkway and come up, come up, come that way into some of those areas. I don't know any residential areas where there shouldn't be any issues.
Mr. Ives, I looked through it again. I didn't see it when I read it earlier. There's not, I can't find the terms of the agreement in the lease agreement that we've circulated, so we need to, it's there, somebody needs to find it, and if it's not, I think we need a term.
here. But it's a 10-year with a 10-year renewal.
I don't know. Will there be a second reading on this?
No.
No. Be one. So, your preference, we could either defer this and bring it back next week with the term included in it, or you could do it by a simple amendment, if that is the only concern?
There's no other concerns. I would make a motion that we, do you have some concern?
Is the, is the four lines in here too? Is the four-line language in here? Yeah, okay. Okay.
It's in section 3.04.
Mr. Washington? You gonna make the last motion?
You know, I know a little bit about this to be dangerous. And most, from what he was saying... from what he was saying, most of your main circuits are gonna probably, there's not gonna be any digging, because most of the city's is overhead. And the only time you get underground is when you get into certain subdivisions, and you're not, you're not doing that, so.
There's a variety of places where they'll need to go underground to cross.
It ain't many.
To cross under a road, where we don't have any wires crossing a road that they'll have to go underground to cross.
I don't, matter of fact, I don't see a real problem with it, to be honest with you. The ten-year agreement kind of bothers me, because I'm thinking, you know, with all the technologies coming down the pipe and whatever, what kind of capacity are you gonna, are you sure you're gonna have the capacity to handle whatever's coming down the pipe?
We feel like we do. The reason we're looking at a ten-year, actually, our agreement with our customers is 20 years. They actually wanted a 20-year agreement, but they will settle for a 10-year with a 10-year renewal. So, we were trying to mirror what we have with our customer, but with the, we've actually upped the fiber counts on some of the routes to make, you know, make up for emerging technology. I think we'll be fine.
Let's say if five years down the road, we need more, can, if we pass this tonight or either defer it or whatever, will we have the capacity of doing that, or do we have to, what procedure we have to go through to increase?
I don't believe that we would have an ability to require them to give us more, we could negotiate with them, we could ask them, I imagine, to plan some on the capacity that they have, the unused capacity that they have at that time.
So when we add the 10-year, can we put that in the wordage also?
Uh.
In the contract? Since we're gonna add the 10-year, we're gonna go back and put the 10-year, can we also put in something stating that at some point, if we do not have enough, we can increase? Can we add that to the contract?
That would be a negotiating point, I don't know that we can, we do not have the right or power to force them to give us any cables. I mean, this is a negotiated point, and they have offered to give us, to provide us with these fibers, and we can talk to them about additional fibers.
You can talk to me, so can you write it to where we give you four cables up front and with the option for four more if needed?
Sure. Make that as amendment to this.
If that's good with you.
I can deal with that.
That'd be, that'd be good. I mean, yeah.
We can do that, Mr. Ives, that's fine.
Thank you. Well, I don't have any idea where the 10-year provision went to, but I'm not finding it right now either. If I find it, I'll let you know where it is, and if not, I'm confident that it'll be accepted by Zayo, and I will add it as an amendment to this.
That's not an issue, that's our understanding.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
They'll start it one.
Well, you know, with the amendment to the four for the city, then you'll probably never need them, you know, but yeah, I'm good, I move for approval, would that change?
You making a motion?
Just did.
Second.
Mr. Washington made the motion, Mr. Shacklet seconded the motion.
With the amendment, addition, the addition of the terms.
Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Epstein.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you very much. You have the Planning Commission appointment for Ms. Jennifer Garland. Wanted to, I think everyone got an application, but to give you the background of Ms. Garland. Ms. Garland graduated, although we're all wearing blue, she graduated University of Tennessee with an architecture degree, and we got to know Ms. Garland, she actually was one of the architects who designed the hospital, very familiar with the gateway, and also lives on the southwest side of town, so she's very familiar with that, lives over on the south side of town.
Move for approval.
Motion second, Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any beer permits?
Not tonight.
Any statements?
Not tonight.
Any other business from the staff or City Council?
There is a letter for you from the Planning Department requesting a rescheduling of a public hearing. It's from Ms. Green, you said a public hearing last week for a zoning application of approximately 10.3 acres located along North Thompson Lane and Wilkinson Pike to be rezoned from RS 15 and LI to CM and GDO 2, High Point Limited the applicant. Due to some of their approvals with the state, they did ask that that public hearing date be moved up, it's right now scheduled for October the 13th, so they are looking for a date of either September 15th or September 22nd. We can still meet the legal requirement for advertisement, this would then accommodate their desire to have the public hearing, so when they go before the state, this matter will have been addressed by the city.
I think we ought to make it the 22nd, just to give a little bit extra time. There was some comments at the Planning Commission for this, wasn't there, the public hearing? I don't guess anybody from Planning's here, but you remember? I think, I think there was.
The Trust Point Hospital project.
There was some conversation, I'd say I make a motion that we move it to the 22nd.
Okay, we have a motion, and then we have a second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any other business for the City Council?
I just want to thank the residents and you all one more time, a final time, for your service and your willingness to serve and put up with me for all this time. It's been a pleasure, most of it. But for you all to do what you do, thank God for you.
Thank you.
Ron, you've been a blessing to every one of us, and I can't think of a more fitting way to, oh, Eddie, I'm sorry.
One other thing I just want to announce, that we lost a citizen in Murfreesboro this afternoon, Mr. Jack Warren.
Oh, really?
Jack was the owner and businessman of the Midstate Roller Rink, and is a fine man, he's a great neighbor and a good friend, and our thoughts and prayers go out to his family.
Great guy.
Ron, I can't think of a better way to call the meeting to adjournment, especially your last meeting for the many years that you've done this on Thursday night, but to pass the gavel over to you and tell you to call the meeting to adjournment.
Let's go to the house.